Please have your attention. Pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, the Bastrop City Council will hold a regular meeting on October 27, 2015, at the City Council Chambers, 1311 Chestnut Street, Bastrop, Texas, to consider the following matters called order. I call this to order. We have a full court here. We are very pleased to have with us quite a number of students from the Colorado River Collegiate Academy, a new school that we have of very ambitious students. We are glad to have you here. We're going to hear from you later, but first, I would invite each of you to stand and lead us in the pleasantries to the White. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am on the Texas side. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, one God, one indivisible.
Councilmember Jackson will lead us in the invocation.
Let us pray. If you have any bother, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here this evening to conduct the business of the city. Thank you for allowing us as elected officials to do what the citizens of our community have elected us to do, and is to conduct the business of our city. Thank you for allowing those in the community to come to our meeting, and that we make just as righteous decisions in our deliberations this evening. In your name we pray. Let us all say.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. We are pleased to have from the Colorado River Collegiate Academy Ms. Brittany Gibson to make a presentation to us on her views about compassion, the character trait for this month.
Compassion is a human trait we have to make up in our conscience. While some of us have more than others, it is a trait that shows us we are human. Compassion is a seed born a part of the human experience. It has to be nurtured throughout life as we live. Scientific evidence shows that we can teach our brains to feel more compassion, both for others and ourselves. So if that is the case, how can we teach ourselves or learn this special trait? To me, compassion is more than helping someone in need. It is a sympathetic feeling that can be shown in any situation and that is used for more than when you need, when someone's in distress. Compassion is a selfless act in which you show someone you care. Even though I am young, I have had more experience in developing compassion than others. Like the quote from "Midsummer's Night's Dream," "Though she be but little, she is fierce." My whole life has been a constant learning and the development of compassion and care for others. Since I was seven, my parents divorced, it has been my journey to help with my little sister. Even though at that age she may not have understood what was going on, she still needed someone. I knew that it would be harder as we grew up without another, but I was determined to show her that I was still here for her. As well as a divorced family, my dad has become extremely ill and physically disabled in the past year. He has developed severe breathing difficulties and he has had to use a wheelchair more and more. When I see my dad in need, I feel an urge down inside me, inside me, to help him more and more. This urge I feel is the development of compassion. I don't do the things I do to get something back. No, I do it because it is a feeling of love I have for my dad and others. To me, it doesn't have to always be the big things that make a difference. The little things matter as well. As a person, I believe the environment in which I grew up in has also developed my compassion. My whole family stood together even though we went through hard times and troubles. With the help of my family and even my church family, I can see that compassion is more than just helping someone in need. I see it as showing everyone that there is someone who cares. I believe compassion comes from the soul. It is like a connection we share between each other and God. That connection bonds us by understanding the emotions, needs, and hurt between us all. It is the greatest bond to know that someone cares no matter the circumstance. Thank you.
Brittany, thank you very much, and thank you for the courage to personalize that in a way that makes it very clear to us what that character trait's about. Now, the Colorado River Collegiate Academy Recycling Pilot Program is something new, but I can tell you, near and dear to the City Council. So I'm going to call on Megan Brandon to introduce their presentation.
Good evening. My name is Megan Brandon, and I am a ninth grade social studies research methods teacher at Colorado River Collegiate Academy, which is in our second year. We are the early college high school, part of Bastrop ISD. Last year, I had the great honor of taking part in a civic competition, and I'm doing the same this year. It's called Speak Out, and it is a part of the University of Texas. So I have selected 20 students, and most of them are here behind me, to take part in this competition. So the group is to pick up an issue in the community that is a problem, research it, and come up with a potential solution. So this year, we have focused on the need for recycling within the school district. We did not recycle, we have not recycled at our school, so this is a new thing. And so these students are kind of leading this pilot program, partnering with some members of Keep Bastrop County Beautiful and Steve Shannon with Progressive Waste Solutions. So I'm going to pass it off to them. I'm going to pull up the PowerPoint really quick.
I am Austin Nunez. I'm part of the Speak Out group. And before we start the presentation, I just want to prep everyone with a little story, the true story, about why we need to have waste management in our society. Back in New York in the early, well, mid-1800s, the mid-19th century, there, it became really popular for people to eat bananas as a food. Everybody, like, it was cheap, it was an easy way to get potassium, everybody liked bananas. But bananas have an edible peel, so people really didn't care what they did with it, and people would throw out the banana peels into the streets. They would just get rid of banana peels. It was disgusting. And there were many laws created because of this, but the public really didn't listen. Eventually, something really good did come out of this. A group of volunteers known as the White Wings cleaned up, they swept the bananas off the streets and disposed of them in a compost, in a composting facility. And that was the first major recycling project that the U.S. has ever seen. And with that, I think we can start the presentation.
Do we, y'all have time for some questions?
Absolutely.
We, I'm going to turn things over to Councilmember Gilliland, who is our expert on such things. And Councilmember McAnally?
Yeah, thanks, sir. You're going to do the presentation until...
I'm sorry, you still have a minute? I'm sorry.
Okay. So environmental laws are extremely important, and so the effects of environmental laws, waste management was not a focus until the 1960s, and the EPA was formed in 1970. Waste pollution increased during the industrial age, and the relevant of major cities negatively affected the conditions of local populations of wildlife. Like, that the streets weren't clean, that, that things would blow into the city, which is disgusting.
You can adjust that mic here.
And so those conditions were what caused the EPA to be formed, and what would cause the first major act for the environment, the Solid Waste Disposal Act, to be passed. And so those conditions were bad, and now we recycle because they kind of, whatever we don't recycle, we cause more waste. Before, they didn't focus on recycling because they focused on just getting rid of the waste. Now recycling also creates waste, or not recycling creates waste, and so we need to recycle in order to eradicate the waste that is being created. So that way, because we're going to run out of room to put that waste. Because right now, most of the waste is being bundled to garbage plants, big lots of land designated for that, but eventually, there's only so much space in those places. So that is why recycling is important to, to the community and to America and the world as a whole.
We plan to begin increasing the amount of items recycled in our schools, so, like, how we're going to do that is by educating our students on how to recycle. So to do that, we have had an assembly, teaching them where to put the recycling, what can go into the recycling bins, and, like, the different things. We have four 96-gallon recycling bins donated to us by Progressive Waste Management, and so we're going to be using those to measure how much recycling we've gathered and how, like, from where we started to where we end. We'll use that to see the difference.
So far at CIRCA, we have held a school-wide assembly presented by Mr. Steve Shannon. We've also partnered with his company, Progressive Waste Solutions, who donated four 96-gallon recycling bins. We've already filled up five of them, which is about 480 gallons of recyclables. We are going, at the end, we are also doing a school-wide recycling school project called Team Up to Clean Up. And basically, at the end of all of this, we are going to compile all of our data and see how recycling has made a difference on our campus.
Some of our goals in creating SUSO and creating a team for Team Up to Clean Up was to educate not only the students that are a part of our school and our organization, but to hopefully take this from just our school and make it district-wide, city-wide, and maybe even this can become a state thing, where every school or every district can have its own recycling program so that we can really make a difference outside of just our city, because this is an issue that has been coming up a lot lately, and it's time that we start finding solutions to these problems. And one solution that everybody seems to agree on is recycling. So by doing this, we're really hoping that we can make a difference, educate other students, other schools, the public, really just bring awareness to what we're doing and to the causes that we're creating, the effects that we're having on the environment, both negatively and positively. Really, we're just wanting to bring awareness and gain as much support as we can to help our organization.
Thank you. Is there a question?
I was just going to ask if you guys have any questions.
Let's see if we can recycle by interrupting comments earlier and ask Councilmember Gilliland if she would like to make a comment.
I would. I would like to say just how extremely proud I am of you for taking the initiative and actually taking action. We, a bunch of boring old people up here have said recycling's important, but you've actually done something about it. You're taking action and you're spreading it in the community. I'm really, really impressed by that, and really proud. And also, thank you for participating in Team Up to Clean Up, because that's another way to get the message out to the rest of the community. So thank you for your presence, thank you for your concern, and I hope you win.
I'd just like to say that you guys are the ones that are going to change the world going forward. You've got a great start doing this. Thank you. I hope you go countywide, nationwide, however you go. This is the thing to do, and it's a new start for your generation, and thank you for cleaning up our mess.
I just want to say that I commend you for what you're doing. When, back about a year ago this time, the council directed to develop a new request proposal for solid waste services with a high priority placed on recycling, and we went through a very extensive process, and we're delighted with what occurred as a result of that process. The community has begun taking hold. Our percentages are up. Residential recycling, we've got to work on the businesses, but with your efforts, I think we're going to get there. And I've just been talking with your teacher during this process. I'd love to come out to your classroom and see how you're doing and see how I can be an assistant to you to further this project along.
I appreciate it. I'd like to say that, I know y'all are leading, but if we can help in some way, we're here because we, I think we consider ourselves maybe the junior partner group, but come back any year and tell us how it's going. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We, the council heard a very extensive report from Executive Director Sean Compatrick of the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation last week, and we will pass on that tonight. Have a proclamation, one of our important institutions in Bastrop. Whereas the municipal court of the city of Bastrop, a highmodern and vital part of local government, has existed since 1832, and whereas more people, citizens and non-citizens alike, come in personal contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined. Whereas public impression of the entire Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. And whereas municipal judges and courts support, person, support personnel have pledged to be imprimical of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and conform to the standards set by the candidates of judicial condo. And whereas the municipal courts play a significant role in preserving the quality of life in Texas communities through the adjudication of traffic offenses, ensuring a high level of traffic safety for our citizens, and whereas municipal courts serve as the local justice center for the enforcement of local ordinances and fine monthly state offenses that protect the peace and dignity of our community. And whereas the municipal judge, judges and clerks continually strive to improve the administration of justice through participation in judicial education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state and local professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the 916 Texas municipal courts, and salute their critical role in preserving public safety, protecting the quality of life in Texas communities, and deterring future criminal behavior. Now therefore, I, Kim Caswell, as mayor of the city of Bastrop, do hereby call upon community members to join us in the recognition of the personnel serving the Bastrop Municipal Court for their vital service and dedication to our community. We honor especially this night the Honorable Judge Charlotte Hines, Court Prosecutor Kathy Holton, Court Administrator Kimberly Walters, juvenile case manager Cheryl Tumlinson, trial coordinator Patsy Perenick, bailiff Jerry Harris, data entry clerk Michaela Gonzalez. Further let it be recognized, the week of November 2nd through November 6th, 2015, as Municipal Court Week, and witness where I have sent my hand and seal of the city of Bastrop this 27th day, October 2015, in the city of Bastrop.
Mayor, the Honorable Judge is back here, and I'll ask for it.
Would y'all, yeah, Ms. Walters, would y'all come forward? And while you're accepting this, I would just like to point out to the council, a few weeks ago, after consultation with the judge and our city prosecutor, Ms. Kim Walters was highly recommended to be, that she be appointed Chief Court Administrator. I did make that appointment, and I can convey to the council, she's doing an outstanding job, she's keeping the city manager informed, and I really appreciate the effort she's done to take. Thank you, Kim. You got it, Terry?
Got it.
Thank you all very much. Keep up the good work. Hope I don't see you. Be sad maybe from the gallery in the audience, or whatever you call it.
That's good.
I do not have any citizens' comment sheets. This is an opportunity for everybody who wants to speak up about something that's not on the agenda to do something. We will move on to announcements. I know Mike put a report in his city manager's report about the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. Kay, you're Doc. Kay, you want to add anything to that? Sorry. Okay, there are two representatives, yes?
Can I make an announcement?
Yep, yes, other announcements.
Okay. Team Up to Clean Up was delayed, start was delayed one week in deference to the fire victims, the people that were dealing with the fires, so we started one week late. So this is our first week, we're collecting metal this week. Next week will be plastic, and the week after that will be paper.
I have a couple of options, okay?
Yes.
Before you tonight, since our, tonight before you, since our third meeting, which would have been our normal utility meeting, has been set for our meeting on the Hotel Motel DMO project. I've handed up to you the utility reports for the last quarter. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. Secondly, I'm very pleased to announce, after about a year hiatus, I guess, this week will be for, the city of Bastrop's TV station will be filming, we're changing it from City Talk to Moving Forward with the City Manager, and we're going to change the format a little bit. We're going to invite citizens to do the interview with me rather than the news media, and see what we can elicit from the community. So hopefully that will go over well, and the first session is scheduled to be taped Thursday evening.
You going to tape it, Mike, or you going to do it live?
We're going to do it live. But, and, I bet that BTXN, BTXN.com?
Actually, .tv.
BT, oh, BT?
XN.tv.
Dot TV, well, okay. Because somebody asked me, I've got the Dish Network or whatever, and I can't see it, I'm on DirecTV, so you can view everything we've got on TV on the computer, as I think Andreas is about to show us.
We're just about one month, we're now going to be moving into the council chambers, because all of the infrastructure for taping in here is now in place. We're going to be improving the speaker system, Ms. McAnally, and adding to that, but I'm just, all I can say is what Andreas and Colin are bringing to the table on this channel and what it's going to do is just blowing me away. It's just, the opportunities are limitless, and I'm just getting excited every time I go back there to see what else they've added to what we can do.
You know, it's just one more example of moving forward to that bigger side of the city. We used to have to go out in the barbershop to find out what was going on. So I'm really glad that we're able to do this, so.
Yeah, so, one of the ways is BTXN.tv is the website, or you can actually just go to the city's website, and here on the right where it says, "Connect with Us," if you type, just click the BTXN TV channel there. When you click it, it'll take you to the page. And we have actually a live stream here of the TV channel itself going right now. That's what's on the channel right now, live. It's a rebroadcast of last week's meeting, and then, and it just loops right now until we get this live, eventually live will be on right now. And then below is our YouTube list, which has all the council meetings for everything we've been recording, so you can watch all of them, from the ethics meetings to the council meetings to the BDC, the joint meeting that occurred last week.
Isn't that just phenomenal? I mean, it's just... And we'll keep, we will keep those on some kind of...
They're permanent, permanent on YouTube, they'll be there for forever until we decide to take them down, or we don't have room, or something.
And we could store them somewhere ourselves.
We are storing them, we store them on our servers currently.
So 20 years from now, somebody could come back and look something up.
Exactly.
Yes, Mayor, you had mentioned that, and I made sure that that was built into that. I don't deal with much, historically, with 900 years old, so I'm always looking backward instead of forward, so I'm glad we can, somebody can do that. So, is this relevant to citizens or councilmembers, or what, just citizens?
Pretty much.
You want to interview Mike?
Whoever wants to interview me. Can you, if you want to interview me?
I mean, you know, I think the first question that we get started to get this running is, if this is going to be our town's handle, the rest of the issue, what we are with our water.
Yes, sir.
Bastrop, I don't know, I think it's a long time coming for them to realize where we are, where we're a year ago, where we're going.
Right. Could we have a contest for who just interviewed Mike? Would that, Mike, think about it? Okay, Mike, we're, any other announcements?
I have one, just one. As you know, as you all realize, I was trying to get the TML Region 10 meeting here in Bastrop, and we're pretty much having a good to go for it. And we're going to be doing that on December the 9th, so I'd like for everyone to make sure to get that on your calendars, and we're working real closely, and Mike and others are trying to pull that together. It's our regional meeting, it'll be, we're hopefully going to have a tour at the Visitor and Prevention Center right before the meeting that evening, and have a social, and Kirk Watson, Senator Kirk Watson, is going to be presented with the legislator of the year award, and the executive director from TML, Bennett Sandlin, is going to be our guest speaker to update us on legislative updates and things. So it's going to be an interesting meeting, and we hope to have a large crowd of people from throughout our region attending that. So December the 9th, it's Wednesday, you'll get more information on that pretty soon.
Thank you, Doc. Anybody else? I'll call Mike to the platform, or bias, or whatever we call this, since he's moving up this way again to make his city manager's report.
Okay. I'm going to be brief. I recognize the council did not get this until this morning, and so we're going to hit a couple of high points, but there are items that I'm going to put on the next council agenda, because there, this is probably one more comprehensive report you've had in some time, and there are a lot of issues we need to discuss. On the water, the protest was filed for summary judgment, and that was denied. And then yesterday, we met from 9:00 until midnight last night in mediation. We did not reach a settlement, but negotiations, we agreed to continue to negotiate for the next week, so we're plugging away. I had to make an executive decision. The county, council time retreat is set for the 16th, because I had to coordinate the 16th and the 23rd, were the two dates that everybody had agreed upon, and so I had to get booking for us at the Hyatt, so that is in place. It just seems to work better just to get out, I mean, I know it's tough, but I, I can cancel that, but I, I, it's your call, it's your, I'm just.
This is gonna be a time to get back some advice, but I will say that I think one of the rules of thumb we follow, doesn't mean we have to always do it that way, is getting away from our staff, kind of clears our brains a little bit. I think that was the idea, so, but I'm sure Mike will listen to anything y'all say.
I, I, I get that, Ken, and it does make sense, I just, I'm concerned about the cost, because I know the Hyatt's only three times as much as it would be to host at the convention center, and I don't know what kind of message we're sending, we don't even use our own convention center, but what do y'all think? I don't know.
I, I thoroughly enjoyed going out to the Hyatt, but I think the cost is pretty prohibitive, and I do think it would look a lot better for us to have enough appreciation of our own convention center to use it. I, it's a little bit after the fact, Mike, I apologize that we didn't talk to you about this before, but if it is possible, can we consider that, please?
I, I will, we'll try, I understand what you're saying, but I think we did talk a little bit about it when we first brought it up, and.
We probably did.
And the direction I got, and I'm, but going forward, we can certainly do it.
Anybody, anybody else want to weigh in?
I, I would, I mean, because it is a retreat in a sense, and so it's, in a sense, we're trying to get away from our environment, around from our surroundings, so that we can really concentrate on that, and not, I like the idea of going to the Hyatt, or getting away from our surroundings, so that we can really concentrate on planning for the city. If we're that close to City Hall and to our other facilities, I think there are too many distractions that could happen in so many other places, as far as if we were at the Hyatt, there wouldn't be as many distractions. Not that we're trying to get away from citizens or anything, but it'd be so much easier and so many more interruptions if we do it in town, and so I prefer the Hyatt.
I might chime in. I attended a limited amount of the, the meeting last year before my tenure here, and my observation was that the, the room that we were in seemed a bit limited in size, I don't know, I thought it was overcrowded. It seems like if we took some facilities at the convention center, you could really use the couple of combinable rooms, and have it a larger area to accommodate, as the mayor's always looking for, to allow the public to really have some space to come in and see what goes on.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good point here, we'd probably get more citizen participation, if that's what we're looking for, if we do it here in town.
I'll try to get it read, adjusted, I will just say that.
If you've already committed, Mike, I'm not, I'm not telling you to change it, I'm just throwing it out there, if you've already committed, then we can think about it for next year, but it might, it might be.
Might you get a little bit larger room this time?
Yes, sir.
And would you let us know? Would you let us know if there's a cancellation fee or anything, too? That should be considered.
Sure. Okay, item D is just something I wanted to start doing for you, is kind of giving you more advanced notice of upcoming events and things taking place, and I'll try to expand upon that more with each report, so it gives the council a little more opportunity to be aware of what's coming up ahead. As the council look at, especially re, item H, the bus shelter project, item I, the excess ranch pit. Item K is an extremely important item, that's regarding our water infrastructure, there were several exhibits attached to that. Item L, which.
Could I, could I make a comment about that, okay?
Yes, sir.
You know, I don't know when, when the appropriate time is, I don't know if it makes any difference to whether, when we have that discussion before or after, probably after, I guess, or not long after, we, we get a ruling on our hearing at the, at the, at the water meeting in Austin, but I, I, I think our issue is important, is K, is where we're going with our water, our infrastructure, the water improvements, because I think this is partly what you talked about, the BDC meeting with a new storage tank or something that.
Right, and that's why.
Well, my comment is, I think we ought to do it outside council chambers, and just, this particular item on a workshop.
And that's why, if you'll note, the first Tuesday in December, which is December 1st, I'm calling for a special workshop session, and that's what it's all about.
Well, I hope it's just this, and we don't add another item.
No, sir.
For a meeting, because this is important to the city here.
It is, that's why I, I plug that in, in my calendar events for you.
What, what Tuesday is it?
Two, uh, December 1st, first Tuesday in December. It's, it's in there. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, Mike.
I talked to you about item L, and then item L ties right into item M, and so those will be items that you really want to study and look at, because those will be on the agenda for some discussion, and all of those are utility issues, that will be for the special workshop session. And with that, I will take any questions the council may have. I do apologize, but when I got home at one o'clock, I just didn't have enough gas to come down here and get this out to you.
Uh, Kelly?
And item P, the, the sandbar.
Yes, we.
Is that, is that costing us a bunch of money to do that, to move that sandbar?
Well, it's not so much, we've got to move it, because it's now becoming a safety hazard, because there's a very small distance between the edge of the ramp and where the sandbox starts. We've, we've come up with a very inexpensive way to get the fish out of there, we're gonna block one end of the sandbar out and kind of swish them out, and that has been acceptable to partial wildlife, we communicated that to them today. The only last two things we've got to do is get concurrence from the Historical Commission and U.S. Fish and Wildlife. The other aspect is, that dirt or sand really has a value to the city, we will be stockpiling all of that sand at the public works yard, because we, we couldn't find a better fill material for when we do water and sewer projects, because we require a very fine, select fill material to be put in and around that pipe, and so that'll be a cost savings on future projects that we won't have to incur.
Oh, good, so it's not just aesthetic, it's, it has other, for other purposes. Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, but without moving it, there's no ramp.
Right.
There's no, no launch.
And I've, I've actually got a call, because I'm concerned about a child coming down the ramp now, and that's all, I'm working on that, so it's a safety issue, really, it just wants to anything else.
Any other questions or, or items you would like, like to address, or items that you might want to see on the, on the future agenda?
I have one other question for Mike, on item H. Yeah, item H on the bus shelters. Clarify for me, are we planning on paying for these bus shelters, or are we just repairing the kits so that, that other groups can, can purchase them and put them up?
That's why I'm putting, that'll be, I had agreed to pay for the first one, that's when it was a wood and metal, so I've got to go back and relook at the budget a little bit, I still think we can get the first one built, but after that, that's, I'm viewing that as a community project.
And let me, let me add to that, that, you know, I had all these brilliant ideas about how we could have different groups build these things, that's got a little group together, including our city engineer, and every idea I had just didn't work, so I have to admit that, and my idea was to build something out of wood that anybody can build, but there's lots and lots of problems with that. So this is the one, the one bus stop that we, I think we, if we didn't pledge, I think there were nods of head around, this is the one we need, because in our theory, folks came and said, "We need something here", and they picked the spot, and we're working on it, and I thought we would do it all with volunteer labor, but it's turned out to be the city's gonna do most of it, and I don't know if there's any other way around that, and so it's pretty expensive to put those up, and I think it's a good plan, that's got to be fabricated somewhere, it can't be done by individuals, and so it's gonna be expensive if we do it anymore.
But that's why it's gonna be part of my, an action item of my list of items I want to review with you. I just want concurrence, and you still want the metal one, so that's why I want you to be thinking, could I be a metal and wood?
Is that what I might want to have, Mike?
Well, there's, um, there's no question that metal will last longer, I just want to make sure that the metal is treated right, and how the paint is put on there, so we're not having to go out there and do metal painting every so often, because it'll peel, or, it will fade on metal, I mean, you just can't get away from that, but if we can, and we're gonna have to choose a color, but I think if it's, if it's acidized correctly, and the proper primer's put on there, the paint should not be an issue. But no question, the, the metal one will far outlast the wood one, and I think will also be more difficult to vandalize than the wooden one.
Mayor?
I don't know, who's first, Kate, you got your, go ahead, Mike.
Sorry.
Okay, well, I, I agree with you, when citizens came, came to the city, I think we ought to take the initiative and do the first one, and as we reach out in the community, and I hope we, we take advantage of maybe involving the school with the building trades class, and see what their capabilities are as far as maybe constructing some of these, because it's, it's the kids, the smaller kids of the ISD that are gonna take full, uh, full use of these bus shelters when they're waiting in the morning.
Anybody, anything else for Mike?
And, and please, there really is a lot of information in there, and if you have questions, don't wait until the next council meeting, if you see something on there, please get with me.
I need one. Okay, I want to, I want to say that with Mike first starting doing these reports this way, we did it to save time, but it, it only works, and I'm talking to myself here, as much as anybody, it only works if we read it and study it, and I have to admit that I can't remember a single time a citizen's called me and asked about something, and I said, "Oh, go on my line and look up Mike's manager's report, item K", you know, and I know there's very, very good information in there, and so we all need to learn to refer to this as a primary document of our, of our work together, so Mike, I appreciate you doing that, and I, I pledge myself to do a better job of paying attention to it and utilizing it.
Well, a couple of weeks ago, a citizen who I, he didn't introduce himself, but gave me such a nice compliment that has motivated me to continue this, he stopped me and said, "You're the city manager," and I said, "Yes, sir", he said, "I want you to know, and I appreciate your city manager's report, you do keep us informed."
Good, that's good to know.
That is good.
Okay, Mike, thank you very much. On the consent agenda, we have five items, anybody want to pull any of them off? Item A2, a second reading on a proposed ardent, I didn't.
Sorry.
You do?
A5, please.
Okay, we're not, we're gonna do A5 separately. Item A2, a second reading of a proposed ordinance of the city council in city Bastrop, Texas, amending the budget for fiscal year 2015 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating the various amounts here, and repealing all prior ordinances and actions in conflict, conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. Item A4 is approval of a second reading of an ordinance annexing a partially occupied 16.21 plus or minus acre tract of land within the Bastrop Town Track A11 on petition of David Singleton on behalf of area landowner Ron Healy, Red Hawk Advisors pursuant to section 43.02A of the Local Government Code and providing for an effective date. Is there a motion to accept out of A1 through 4?
Second.
Please call Ron Land.
Member Jim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Killian?
Yes.
Councilmember McAnally?
Yes.
Councilmember Shum?
Yes.
Item A5, consideration discussion of possible action regarding requests from the historical society regarding spending of the hot money. Mike?
Yes, and I'll tell you, I debated back and forth whether to put this on the consent or the regular new business. My decision to put it on consent, the past two, if not three years, that this item has come before the council, the council's approved it with very little discussion, understanding why they're having to carry the fund balance forward after their initial year, going through in great detail what they put in their letter, so I just made the assumption since it had not received any negative comments, nor was I directed to do anything, that the council just passed, so I'm, I'm, that's.
I just want a clarification that it was only for that one month's expenses.
Yes, yes, it is.
That I did, yeah, that's all.
Motion would be in order.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Willie, get that, Kelly. Please call Ron.
Member Jim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Delway?
Yes.
Councilmember McAnally?
Yes.
Councilmember Shum?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
I'm saying, yes, I just don't know what the motion is, I just heard that there was a motion, so I'm not sure what the motion exactly is.
Uh, Mike, could you, could you spell it out while we're waiting for Councilmember Jackson to vote?
It's basically to approve the request of the historical society to carry forth one month of their balance into October because of their, their, do their fiscal year on a calendar basis, and we do ours on a fiscal year basis.
Okay, I mean, just to mention, it was just, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that I just wasn't sure.
Well, do you think it's been stated enough for parliamentary purposes? Okay, would you like to vote?
Yes.
Oh, Doc, Doc, yes, thank you, and I, we could have spelled it out better, no, I agree. Item D1, consideration discussion of possible action regarding approval of a resolution of the city of Bastrop, Texas, submitting the city of Bastrop's nominee to fulfill a recently created vacancy on the Bastrop Central appraisal district via the resignation of the late cycle. This was, this is in addition to what we did last time, right?
Right, what, what as I understand it, is that this is a vacancy that has to be filled, this is item D1, beginning on page 38, it was created as stated in the letter that I received about October 16th, notifying me that there was a vacancy, and the process that had to go through, which the council has to nominate someone for that vacancy. The reason I pushed to get it on the agenda tonight, you'll note in that letter that, that we have to have the nominee in by resolution by November 30th, so you have, you don't have to take action tonight, and I'm leaving that up to you, I want, but I wanted to give you the latitude that if you want time to think about it, that that's up to you, because as I understand it, you get to nominate whomever you want.
Eric?
Could I make a comment?
Sure, of course.
I think, I think this is pretty simple, unless somebody else knows some of the people, other people that were requested to be nominated, but I think the last meeting, we took up two individuals from the city of Bastrop, and one we voted on, we'll have to take the other guy, just let them on that ballot, and, and nominate him.
Yeah, but they're already nominated.
They're already on board.
This would be somebody, this would be somebody brand new.
I mean, that wouldn't put on this packet, that'd be nice to know if we were, we don't get any information about who's on the board, or who's dominated by who, and that used to be a common practice years ago.
Well, last time, you did have the list, and what you were doing was you could either approve the directors or submit somebody else, but this is different, and I can go back at the whole last council.
No, I mean, that, 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 that's, this is, they're, they're asking all the entities, you got to be willing to nominate somebody, and we don't have to nominate.
You don't have to.
Our little votes not gonna make much difference anyway, but if we know someone that would be good, and we put them, and we, and I think that's almost an individual thing, we got the next meeting, we come forward, so y'all might all think about the people in our community that might be good on that board, and we might, even though we can't elect them, we can maybe put them up and maybe help get them elected, so let's all think about it.
I, I would just say that, I know it, it seems like we don't have that many votes, but the appraisal part, appraisal is an important part of our budget process, especially getting the certified tax roll.
And we might, even though we can't elect them, we can maybe put them up and maybe help get them elected. So let's all think about it.
I, I would just say that I know it seems like we don't have that many votes. But the appraisal part, appraisal is an important part of our budget process, especially getting the certified tax roll. And I think just from a responsibility standpoint, the council should submit a name.
Okay, well, Mike, let's, let's all think about it, and we've got next meeting, right?
You got actually two meetings.
It would be good if you submitted it in advance so we can get a profile on, you know, and so anybody can put anybody out. We could put up 10 people if you wanted, we could select one to nominate, Kelly.
Has anybody expressed an interest to you, Mike, who would want to serve on this board?
No.
Yes, maybe this. I don't think right now, anybody.
Okay.
Okay, so we're disposed with that. We will hold it, go forward with it if we hear, if we don't hear any names or anybody wants to pass. Okay, Mike?
Correct.
Item D2, is consideration discussion of possible action regarding approval of an ordinance amending city code section 1206002. Implementing a parallel parking zone in the city central business district of the city along the east side of Main Street between Pine and Chestnut. Providing enforcement authority related to say containing a serviceability clause and establish an effective date. Mike?
Yes, this is a follow-up item from a previous council meeting and discussion in which you directed me to prepare this ordinance. And in essence, what this ordinance will do is from Main Street, from Pine to Chestnut. Head-in parking will be on the west side. The two-to-one parking, parallel parking will be on the east side. And will be designed, striped in a manner for the bigger trucks. And again, the reason we chose not to extend the head-in parking out, it reduced down our travel lanes. And this may allow us to maintain at least 11-foot travel lane where the other approach would reduce it down to 10-foot. And that's a very, very, very close travel lane.
Now, why do we need an ordinance for this?
Because if somebody was to pull into the parallel parking head-in, we just.
We would enforce it.
We got to enforce it. And we're going to put signs of truck parking on the east side because we're trying to encourage them to go over. Because they don't, they're going to get taken.
Wouldn't an ordinance just says if the spaces are marked for parallel parking, it's legal to park parallel? And if their spaces are marked for angle parking, that it's legal to park angle or something? Instead of making it specific to this particular case? Some trucks won't even fit on the north end.
Yes.
Excuse me, in answer to your question, that would be easier, but that's not the way that the city has ever codified traffic and parking regulations. So if we wanted to do that, we would need to recodify the traffic and parking section of the co-ordinants. Which we could.
It just seems to me. Are you talking about the ordinance or just the sign?
The ordinance.
Are you talking about the ordinance? I'm sorry, I missed an option. To me, it doesn't make sense that every time you want to change how you park a car, you have to change an ordinance. It seemed to me that you just strike the thing, you know, the city's in charge of, of striking the street. You strike the street, and the ordinance should say, the cars have to park according to stripes.
Part of it has to do with public notice of changes that involve fines. And the parking changes such as this do involve fines, and therefore they have, noticing this has to be counted.
Well, would notice be a sign that says you got stripes, you got signs? I don't know, I'm just, it just seems to me we're.
We can look at it.
Maybe I'm making a big thing out of nothing, it just.
I understand your point, and we do have legal review every two weeks. We'll get our city engineer, our chief police, and we'll, we'll evaluate it with the city attorney.
I'm just thinking in the future, just to try to simplify the process.
Sure.
If we could make the rules a little more universal so that we're not, every time we want to change.
Sure.
A specific street, you know, a specific area, and as we grow, it, it might become more burdensome.
Okay.
Just changed, we have to go back and, as Jesse was saying, recodify.
And I'm saying, you could, you know, maybe that's a, you know, one-time deal. You do that, and you get it, you know, you get it straight, and you don't have to go through this process every time.
Yeah, we'll give it a look.
And it's, it's, it's good to do that from time to time because I'm sure the sections of the transportation don't they go back to 95?
And I don't have a problem approving this, I just am saying, if you look in the future, maybe we ought to rethink the process, make it a little simpler.
I agree, I think you're saying.
I have a question, though. This is specific to Main Street between Pine and Chestnut, right?
Yes, sir.
So if we did a more broad, I mean, are we going to have to revise parking codes anyway because of form-based codes and the way things are, seem to be going in the city? I mean, I like that this is specific to this one street and this one area, but are we due for another revision?
There are certain areas, as I understand, the form-based code that will allow for head-in parking if they meet certain requirements of the form-based code. So in certain areas in and around the downtown, that could be a possibility, yes.
Well, maybe we should revisit the whole thing at some point. Because there are some places that I'm looking that shouldn't have this, this sort of parking, and some that should. And so maybe.
And I think, I believe under the form-based code, the council gets to make that final call.
Right, right. So on this particular one, are you saying that you're not doing the, the pull-in parking?
Yes.
Oh, it is pull-in, forward pull-in?
But we're doing it on the east side instead of the.
Okay.
And we're keeping the head-in parking the same length. So we keep, because I want to keep our travel lane as wide as possible.
It'll, people will not have a trouble parking on the north section of downtown, right? Because of the street spot.
Right.
It's narrower on the south end, and so this allows us to equalize the amount of parking we have for angle parking of three of the four areas. And, and still keep the, the wide lane. I mean, so it's, it kind of equalizes the two sides, even though we've got a, a narrow street on the south end.
What about the islands that stick out?
Well, that's going to be taken care of when we do the Main Street project.
Okay, so this is temporary.
Right.
So if we, if we do approve this tonight, we'll probably end up approving another one later anyways when the islands are removed?
Uh, there's going to be discussion, Macabre, between the BDC on that issue.
Yeah, there'll be some conversation, though. But we will certainly do, I think Mr. Schiff brings a good suggestion to the table, and we will put that in the hot. Meanwhile, is anyone interested in moving this change?
And I'll say.
You want it on the consent agenda for the next one, or you want to leave it, leave it up to grabs? Yeah, we.
Okay, consider it.
Because your, your question is the process, not this particular one, correct?
I'm okay with this one.
So, and put it on the consent agenda for the next meeting, which you can always pull off. So any discussion? I think it was Shelley and Garrett?
Yes.
Kelly and Garrett.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Councilmember Schitt?
Yes.
Member Jim Del Rosso?
No.
Councilmember McEnell?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you, all, it's a four to one vote. Mike, I know y'all get that done when you can, we'll see how it goes.
Yes, sir.
Item D3.
We're going to wait until after the second reading.
Oh, yeah, yeah, don't do it yet. Good point. Item D3, consideration discussion of possible action regarding instructing the city manager to prepare the necessary documents to rent out the vacant lot at 1307 Chestnut Street, or generally located between Fayette Street and the City of Bastrop Convention Center, to potential venues and other vendors. I, I put this on the agenda because the comment we had in citizens' comments last week just reminded me that we've been talking about this for a real long time. At least some of us have. And I think that to, I just want to say I'm sure what Mike will do because he reminded me the other day. First, first shot at that place has got to be the convention center. You know, if the convention center needs it for something that affects the convention center, I'm assuming that we all agree with that. But on a temporary basis, I, I'd just like to see the citizens get more financial remuneration for the, for the use of that lot. And however, Mike can work it out, I can, just on a vendor basis. There could be a whole lot of uses for that and not just be used, you know, two days a week. And the, I don't know what he'll work out, I don't know what the market will be. But I'd just like to see him run that down and see if he can figure out a process whereby we can use it more often. Whereby we can gain some more income from the use of that lot while we're waiting to use it for our own purposes. So that's my recommendation.
What is their lease up?
Well, it's a 30-day lease. And my suggestion, that's why I put the lease in there, because to, to do that, we would have to either, we'll, we'll have to negate the current lease. And if they just want to use it on Saturdays and that's amenable to the council, that's how we'd have to revise the lease. I think maybe a course of action that encourages a citizen's input. I had a couple of suggestions made to me, and the convention center, I looked at some options. Is to come up with some list of real things that can be done and be supported. And then bring those to the council, and if that seems to address what you're wanting to do, because I do agree with the mayor. That was a very expensive piece of property. And then we notify the 1832 that will be taking the steps to void the lease, which we have the right to. It's just a month-to-month lease. We're doing it out here in the public session, so we're being open with everyone that we're looking at this. And so farmers' markets does need to be aware, and I hope they are watching us because it affects them, and we'll want to hear from them. And, but I do think it's worth reevaluating. In, in my opinion, when the council allowed that to occur out there, I don't think that it was ever intended to last as long as it has. It's just kind of got pushed aside with other things that we were dealing with. And it really does need to be back and relook at and see how we can put it to a better use.
I, I really want to see a list of, thank you for doing that, of what could go there instead. I would hate for nothing to be there.
Right.
So thank you for that.
Yeah, and it doesn't mean that the farmer's market or other farmer's markets might not, I mean, anybody could apply for something that the council, that y'all agreed to. I like that idea.
And, and as you heard at the citizens' comments last time, that there are other vendors who have wanted to set up there but have been turned away. One of the thoughts I've had is actually turn the farmer's market under the auspices of the Main Street program. Because they're trying to get their culinary district started. And I think under the Main Street program, we can actually see an increase in vendors coming in. And that site being utilized on a more regular basis. And rather than going through an entity, you're going through a department of the city to run space.
I know in other cities that has worked out well. I think that's a wonderful idea. Thank you, Mike.
I think that's a great idea, too, Mike. I would also ask that you post it somewhere that's, so that citizens who go to the website maybe could come forward with ideas as well. Because there might be some other ideas in the queue.
Yeah, I like, I just want to say, I like your idea. The one model we do have is the farmer's market, but I'd like to get back to the idea where a farmer shows up with a pickup truck and stuff in it. Backs up, I mean, back up to whatever, people go look what they got, maybe there'll be jewelry in one of the trucks, I don't know, but. Charger by truck, you know? So do y'all want to instruct Mike to go ahead and do this?
Yes.
So is anyone want to move that?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, Kelly. And then, Kay, any other discussion? Everybody clear on what this is? Please call Rob.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Councilmember McEnell?
Yes.
Councilmember Schitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Member Jim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Mike, how you fix for executive session?
I was asking before the meeting started, I, I later, there's another activity going on. And could we postpone the executive session till November 10th meeting? Yes, that is possible. We can postpone, but I do want to put you on notice because negotiations are still ongoing. I may have to call a special meeting of the council if a settlement is reached before November 10th.
And you're not going to be able to tell us that tonight anymore?
Because I don't have any.
Because what you told me about, what I talk about is not final anyway, right?
No, it's, it's, it's a big gap.
And this is something that I would think would be of an emergency nature, necessary. But that's right or not, if that would be hard to call, I mean.
When we look at it, it very well could be because it deals with water supply.
I mean, it's pretty, it's going to be an emergency for us about water.
What I think we've talked about is next week, posting like third, fourth, fifth, and sixth meetings, just in the event that we do reach.
I think that's a better approach.
Great, I like that, great idea. Doc, your turn.
For.
You're going to move your hands.
Oh.
Did you lose your chance?
I'm moving for second.
Willie's second, so let me have a show of hands. One, two, three, four, I see five hands, we're adjourned.